Guys engaged in the discussion at the moment to please mute your microphone. Thank you.
All right, with that I will move on to our first item. And I know that Wendy is here, but because I know no other way, I'll start by turning it over to Kevin on this intermunicipal agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Select Board and visitors to the meeting tonight. We've got a few items that we'll talk about. The first one obviously being the intermunicipal agreement and the shared health inspector services that come along with it. This is a continuation of, I'd say, over a year Wendy, efforts around a grant that we received that will provide funding for three years initially with renewals for another three years, two subsequent three-year periods that are allowing us to support our Board of Health and our Health Director in their efforts to provide the best level of public health here in Topsfield and beyond. We came to you with the Public Health Nurse a few months ago, and this is the next phase of that conversation around bringing on an inspector, a health inspector to help the tri-town, the three communities that are involved with it. So I will let Wendy talk about some of the details around it and the work that was done to craft this document. And the hope tonight is that we can review it as we would in a work session, talk through any concerns, and then ideally, just because there is some time sensitivity, we're hoping to maybe bring this up on Monday. It is as a agenda item for right now. If we have enough comfort level to bring it up for a vote on Monday and then provide that back to the other two communities, which so with that, Ms. Hansberry, please fill in the details.
There are actually a lot of details and I'm not sure really what you want, but I'll start with just sort of an overview. As the Select Board may remember, we got this grant in May 2020. We built up through the, over the past year, a mutual agreement between Topsfield, Boxford, and Middleton to support this and to strengthen public health infrastructure. We have managed to do that very successfully. This past August, the Select Board, the Topsfield Select Board voted to support and the hiring of a tri-town public health nurse position. That position was filled by the same person.
There we go.
There we go. I was gonna say someone needs to mute.
And now Wendy's muted.
And we ended up with Wendy muted. That's the one person who we didn't need to have mute.
I appreciate that. I didn't realize how hard it was trying to talk over to get distracted. So anyways, I'm not sure where I got muted, but this past August, the Select Board supported the hiring of a tri-town public health nurse. She, it was the same person who's been working with us throughout the pandemic that we brought on back in November of, I'm sorry, October, or maybe it was November of 2020. And that has been very successful in an effort to share the responsibility and support the Public Health Excellence Grant. Middleton is going to be sort of the next person to bring on an employee 100% funded through the grant. They are taking on that responsibility. And because Topsfield is the financial lead, we would be the one paying them through the grant to support that position. So this is sort of how the tri-town, the three towns are cooperatively supporting public health piece by piece and building a really strong structure for us. The inspector himself is somebody we're all familiar with. He has been working with us as a contractor. He has shown that there is value added to having this position available. For example, in my own work, there have been some things going on with a larger property needing some supervision through, you know, DEP required remediation. And I was able to attend some of those state meetings because this inspector was able to step in and do perk testing that was going to last, you know, seven or eight hours. So I really hope that you all will support this. The document, hopefully you had a chance to read it. I know it was sort of short timing. A lot of the questions that came up in that document were resolved internally in Middleton. The document was actually created by KP Law for us to present to Middleton. It's now, you know, an opportunity for the Select Board to look at it. Kevin did point out, and absolutely correct, and we're intending to put the language in for a timeframe around the Middleton billing us. So we thought it would be good as a quarterly. We're double checking with Middleton that that fits in with their ability to bill us quarterly. Oh, sorry, bill our grant quarterly and to pay them for, to be able to pay the inspector. So that's kind of where it is. If you have any specific questions, did you all get a chance to look at it?
Hi Wendy. Yeah, I did get a chance to look at it. And there's one thing I'm unclear on. You said that Topsfield is the financial lead. Middleton's referred to as the lead party. And there's a question about should Boxford be part of the agreement? Can you just kind of wrap that up for me? Because I'm not, I'm not connecting the dots.
Sure. So the original MOU, the original grant itself was given to the three towns collectively. And Topsfield was the one that was named as the lead financially, meaning that the state gives us the grant and it's our name on it. But it has always been the three towns, Boxford, Middleton, and Topsfield. So because this agreement is specifically between Topsfield and Middleton, but we are referring to a document, the existing MOU that was signed October, no, no, sorry, December 2021, I believe. Because that document refers to all three towns, we want to make sure this document also reflects that the three towns are involved in the decision-making. Does that?
It does. Nope. Thanks.
Wendy, if I could, just kind of going on top of that, so it says this agreement is between Topsfield and Middleton, but all three towns are signing?
Yes. Because Boxford is referenced several times within it.
It is. Okay. And it looks like in some cases they have say, in other cases, they don't. Like they don't have budget approval. But they do provide supplies. And I couldn't tell if they are involved in making amendments. And you know what? I think the difficulty was, is the word municipalities. Because it's used interchangeably. Sometimes it refers to a single town. Sometimes it refers to Topsfield and Middleton only. They are referred to as the municipalities. And then that word municipalities will be used to mean all three towns. So it's confusing through the document who it's referring to and who gets to do what.
Okay, we had thought we had cleared that up in the top whereas, the first whereas, by naming out all three municipalities. But I do understand what your meaning is. And if it is more comfortable, we can certainly take out municipalities and in each instance, refer to the specific towns that you want us to refer, like that the document is referring to. I don't know if that's more helpful.
It might be, or give another name when you're referring to all three. Because in the first paragraph, it says, these parties Topsfield and Middleton shall be referred to as municipalities. And then later on, it refers to all three as the municipalities. And so I think it would be clearer if maybe you found another word other than municipalities or you specified the towns. Just because I couldn't follow. I couldn't follow completely who had to do what.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Kevin.
I was just gonna, maybe it's just the collaboration or the cohort or some different definition, as you said, Man Vice Chair, that could differentiate municipalities, which is the two communities Middleton, Topsfield, and something else. So I think that's probably something we just got to do a search and then basically define that at the top and then replace accordingly.
Yeah, that's all I'm getting to, because I'm looking at something here. It says, by the municipalities and Boxford. And then right below it, it says, the municipalities shall meet. In that case, it's meaning all three. So it just bounces back between two and three. So if there were, and that's in item 3B, that specific one I'm referring to. But it does that throughout the document, so it just might be clearer.
Yeah, that sounds like a pretty easy fix, like Kevin mentioned. We'll use the, or the tri-town or something. Yes.
Something, yeah. And then just one other question about the funding. So how much did we receive in the grant? And will it cover now that we're doing full-time and with pension contributions? And there were a whole lot of things listed as expenses. Do we have enough money?
Yes. So we have budgeted out the position that is currently supported through Topsfield. And that included all of the fringe benefits, the same consideration and sort of numbering. You know, discussions were, had about the position that Middleton will hold. Actually, we do not have enough money for them to include fringe benefits to have a completely full-time position. We're hoping to build that up. But the set of money that included anything like that was discussed prior to putting this sort of on paper. So we do have a number. It does cover.
So what is Middleton building up?
I'm sorry. And no, Middleton is in charge of determining the hourly rate and the fringe benefits that are included. We have given, the budget gives Middleton a number to work with. And as far as we understand, it stays the same until the state tells us differently. Our budget is already worked out and they have a number to work with and they stay within that number. And that's, it says in here, it doesn't incur costs outside or above what the grant allows.
Okay. So Middleton will make sure that that person is only working the number of hours that the grant can cover, so that we won't get any surprise bills quarterly that said, oh, my gosh, they needed another 20 hours.
Yes. No, there's nothing like that. Yes.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from folks? It seems like that to note.
Well, one quick one, just on the work plan. It does say in here that the work plan won't be developed until we've done an analysis of the prior 12 months. But this is the first time that we're developing the work plan for this inspector, correct? Yes. Okay. So in this one instance, we don't have 12 months. We'll be developing it as the initial one. And going forward, it will be based upon a review of the past year? Yes. Okay.
And we hope to certainly be able to have cumulative information for all three boards, Select Boards, Boards of Health in all three towns.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, one of the things that I'd like to, just from a timeline standpoint, is as Ms. Hansberry said, we are creating language around the billing component that's not in this document. Explicitly listing when the billing will take place. In essence, operationally, an invoice will be generated from Middleton to Topsfield with the costs and the benefits associated with it, which will be paid from the grant. And those who might be following this conversation, but might not have read the document multiple times, the document, it says that no funding of this position will be beyond the allotted amount of the grant funds. So it's 100% grant-funded, including the fringe benefits. What I would say is, as we develop that language over the next 24 hours, if there's any comments specifically or modifications that the board would like us to consider incorporating into the document, if you could send that over, you know, by the end of this week. I know it's a short turnaround, but we are trying to move this in relative to the meetings that Middleton and Boxer have scheduled with, or Middleton explicitly around their schedule and their Select Board meetings. So ideally, Monday would be the time where we have a finished document to review a final time and vote on. That all said, we want to get the document right. So if we aren't able to accomplish that, we certainly could push it out. But that's sort of our goal with this, as a timeline to sort of make sure everything moves effectively.
I mean, I certainly don't want to speak for anyone other than myself, but based on the limited number of questions in their scope, I would think people are generally comfortable with the idea of being ready to vote on this on Monday. Do I read the room correctly?
You do.
You do.
Yep. And I'm sure that clarification will all be taken care of. And so that was not a huge issue, but that's good to make those changes.
So we should be on a timeline where we can send a final approval on Monday.
And we'll target to try to have language and looking at Wendy, she doesn't know that, but I'm looking at you. We'll have language with those modifications. Hopefully by the end of the day on Friday. And it's aggressive, but that's what we would be targeting. So the board will have a chance to review it over the weekend. Is that okay, Wendy?
Sure. So you're saying I would get you comments or I would get you changes so that the board has a chance to, any comments that they might have by Friday incorporated. You get to read it over the weekend? That's absolutely doable.
Okay. I know one member of this board likes to dedicate his weekends to reviewing documents. So that Friday deadline works well.
Wendy, will the work plan be included? It's referenced in here, but has it been developed?
No, because of the fact that we didn't get our MOU signed until last December. Our first work plan completed for 12 months will be this December. We do have quarterly reports that go in and narratives and happy to give anybody that information. We have only actually had contractors up until August. So some of the information in that work plan wouldn't be relevant to the pieces that some of us are looking at, which is, you know, how does it work as an employee and infrastructure and supporting that? Happy to give anybody the quarterly narratives that we've had. We've submitted one, I think we have one due actually in a week. So it's half done.
Oh, Wendy, I'm sorry. I was thinking of it more in terms of what this person's doing going forward, so that they know what they're working on. Your work plan is a year in review, retrospect?
Yes. No, no, no. He has a work plan. I'm sorry, he, the position has a work plan. It's part of your reporting. I believe you did see that work plan when you reviewed the contractor position. The, was that done this past June?
It's all blending. I know.
I believe you got to see the health inspectors, the environmental inspectors work plan in June, but happy to forward it around if people want to see it again. Sorry, I was thinking of a different work plan. I was thinking of, you're right, 12 months in review.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, unless anyone, Kevin and Wendy included, have anything else? We will wait to see those documents at the end of the week and hopefully be ready to vote for them on Monday.
Once again, thank you and grateful for your support for this program. Thank you very, very much.
Good work, Wendy.
Wendy.
Thank you, Wendy.
The Asbury Street Bridge, Town Administrator Kevin Hartuny, and I turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So about a month and a half ago, I was approached by our Veteran Service Officer, Dick Cullen, a Veteran Service representative who works at the federal level, who happens to live in Ipswich, approached Mr. Cullen regarding the naming of the Asbury Street Bridge after a local veteran, George Patton III, who's the son of the well-known George Patton from World War II. George Patton III served in two conflicts, Korea and the Vietnam wars, and was also a general in the Army. Lived across the bridge at the homestead in Hamilton. But the family is regionally been very active in community activities and for a period of time. Mrs. Patton lived in Topsfield after the homestead was sold and has supported veterans' activities here in our community as well. The reason this is on a work session is I mostly want to give an update to the board that this is happening. The conversations are happening around this and the steps that we have taken and the steps that need to still be taken. The first thing was, was that there was a memorandum drafted by this gentleman from Ipswich basically outlining the service of Mr. Patton, General Patton. And when we spoke, I said, I really love to see a community engagement component of that memo. How the General Patton was involved in Topsfield, in Hamilton, and other communities, both for veteran services, but also other activities and how they gave back to their community. Secondarily, there was an offer to meet with Mrs. Patton, which I've accepted, but have not scheduled. I think it's important we talk to the family and understand sort of what their perspective is on this. And then, and I know they are supportive, but it would be, it's a really great opportunity to make that connection. Third, in my mind, one of the most important elements of this was to discuss with our own veteran community, those who are active in veteran organizations such as The Post, having them weigh in on the considerations and if it's something they believe is appropriate and whether they would support or not. And about three weeks ago, about a month ago, at their last meeting, VSO, Cullen, and myself met with American Legion here at Town Hall at their monthly meeting and spoke with them about the ask. They were mostly all aware of it and they unanimously voted to support the concept of naming the bridge after George Patton. So that was, that was really great that they were supportive of this concept. And then the next item was, what's our past practice on naming bridges or buildings and things of that nature? We don't have, because we'll be setting something of a precedent by naming locally this bridge. We do not have that I've been able to find in speaking with people with lots of institutional knowledge, any formal policy on naming. The only thing I'm aware of that's been named, or maybe it wasn't even named, but we have two dedicated benches outside of Town Hall that have been donated in the memory of people who've served as a Select Board members here in Topsfield. Very active members of our community that we wanted to remember and recognize. Unaware of anything else other than Proctor School, Stewart School, to be frank. And those obviously were named for, I believe, the landowners and named quite some time ago after those individuals. So that's something we'll have to work through as well, because decisions we make today could have impacts tomorrow. So that's something we're looking at as well. And the last item that we had consideration was, do we actually own the bridge? Can we locally name the bridge? Or is this a massive bridge that they have jurisdiction over? And we did confirm that this bridge is a local bridge, although improved through a tip funding a handful of years ago plus. The funding came through the state. The bridge is considered a local bridge. So we do have jurisdiction, if we choose to do so, to name the bridge. So there's still some open-ended items that we need to kind of flush out and understand before we can get to a point of bringing something to the board for consideration. But because we're very early in the process still, I did want to bring it to the board in the work session. And then, you know, if there is any consideration, thoughts, questions the board might have as we're sort of navigating this process anew, I thought this would be a great opportunity to talk through that at this time, so we can keep moving forward and make some progress with it.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I would echo that we need to go through this process because it, I mean, ultimately, the process has very little to do with the person that we're talking about, you know, honoring with the bridge. It has to do with making sure that we have a process and that we're following, you know, that we're setting this up. So in, you know, we have only so many bridges and roads and things to name. And so I think, given that, we need to make sure we're doing it in a standard and appropriate way. Right? So.
Totally agree.
I might include.
I agree, Marshall.
Where the person lived and what contributions they made to the town. I am 100% in support of veterans, naming things for, you know, veterans. I couldn't be any more in support of that. And part of the process we have to come up with is, what are the rules for that? As I think you just stated, and how close are their ties to us, this community?
Okay. So Kevin, that was a lot of different things that are in process or need to be done. Do we have even the notion of a timetable on where we are in this process or what comes next?
So the three open items was an update to the memo. There's a memo that's not shared on Board Docs because the request was for it to be updated. Initial memo talking about George Patton's service, as I mentioned earlier, want to see what the community involvement is, as Mr. Brown, Select Board Member Brown mentioned as well. And then that's one. Two, I do want to meet the family, speak with them. And then three, it's that policy component of it and see if we can track down one. Some of those are things in our control. Some of those things are less in our control, such as meeting with the family or getting that memo updated back to us. But working with VSO, Cullen, my hope is that we can move some of these in the coming weeks. The policy is one I, you know, I don't want to reinvent the wheel. I think that we just need to be able to find the time or designate members of our team to hopefully find the time to track down a policy or two or three that we can then look at, review and say, yeah, we think this is a good policy for Topsfield or modifications to it to make it what we want it to be. That would be something we'd obviously bring back to the board, potentially in the next month's work session, talk about that. Because I think there's two, it's the naming, but then it's the policy, right? That those are the two.
Okay. We will, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, one other question, because well, first of all, you already preemptively answered about four of my questions. But the one that I was also raising is, it says there's, it's assumed that there would be minimal cost. And as we go out and figure out how we do this, I think, what is the cost is, we'd be remiss for not having an estimate of that as well.
I think if there is a cost, the cost would be borne on the organization or individuals who are looking to have the naming, such as if there's plaque or something of that nature, which would have to go into the policy. If we're going to name something, what do we do and how do we show it? It needs to be considered when we name things. So there's a lot of unknowns, but you know, I don't foresee in my mind at least there being a cost. And if there were any, I mean, I'm thinking, you know, they, they might come back and say, you know, this costs X amount of money. Is this something the town would pay for? And then it would be a conversation around what's appropriate. But right now, as I foresee it, I don't see us to have much cost, other than the people time, which is dedicating to creating the policy, which they can do anyway. But then the other parts of it as well.
I would just echo, I think the policy part is really important and I think we should get the policy down before then we use our first example and say, following this policy, this is the first infrastructure that we would like to name.
Yeah. And, you know, when Kevin and I have talked about this, I pointed out that coming from living in Lynn for 16 years, they have so many intersections, so many squares, so many little bridges and benches and things that, you know, in a place like that, I imagine the policies are probably a little more lax because just the sheer number of things you can name are far bigger. We don't have all of that much here. So I think we need to be that much more careful with what we designate, when we, and how we designate it. So. Unless there's anything else on that, we can move on to item six, the Emerson 40B project.
So I will recognize Chief Hubby is on this call. And I may look to Chief Hubby to maybe fill in some details. There was a meeting that our public safety team had with the developer of the Caleb Group who are developing the Emerson Field site, Emerson Homes. One of the things we've heard loud and clear, one of the things we recognized early, early in the process is that adding units of housing in and around the downtown in the process is that adding units of housing in and around the downtown in the community would absolutely add traffic. What that impact looks like, the traffic study that have been performed during pure analysis of that will make good determinations using data of what those real impacts are. Preemptive to, to that and just a general acknowledgement that the intersection that will be impacted, which is the intersection of Main Street and High Street 97, is one of, of significant concern for the public safety team and members of our community. And as we've gone through the process and been speak, speaking with Caleb Group, more recently, they have offered to provide at no cost to the town in analysis, what's referred to as a road safety audit, just the first step potentially to find funding for design and then hopefully funding eventually for any type of either reconfiguration or enhancements to that intersection to ensure that it's moving as effectively and efficiently as possible, but also and most importantly, that it's, it's as safe as possible. So mostly I wanted to flag that that conversation's happening right now and it's important that it's, it's understood and that, that's something that has been offered to us and which I've indicated, yeah, it's a concern of the community, it's a concern of ours. And if you're going to add any traffic and willing to pick up the, the, the costs of doing the audit, we, we likely support it, but I, I did, I did say I wanted to make sure I spoke with my board, our, our team to make sure there isn't anything that you might have concerns over or thoughts, things you might want to be considered within that analysis. So before I pivot, Chief Hubby, I don't know, you were able to make that conversation. I've heard it secondhand. I've spoken with the, the contractor separate from the group, but anything you'd like to add relative to that meeting that happened between the public safety team and Caleb regarding this intersection?
I know the, uh, the public safety team met with them, they provided us a PowerPoint presentation with a very comprehensive overview of the locations. They've recognized that that intersection by Mass DOT has an above average accident ratio already to similar, similar intersections. What I'm really concerned about is the location of the ingress and egress of that. And they, they, even though they talk about the sightlines above normal, my concern is a vehicle pulling out of there and taking a left-hand turn to go 97 where they have to cut through a line of traffic, they're going to be head-on with South Common Street across from the library and also cars going out of town on 97 heading north, southbound or eastbound in that direction. People don't realize the volume of traffic that we have in that area. Our measurements indicate there's 40, close to 4,100 cars that travel High Street on a weekly basis. And people, what is really astonishing is the close to 89,000 cars that travel Main Street in front of the Commons. We did those statistics in, on May 21st of this year and also May 31st, on May 14th of this year on High Street and May 21st on Main Street. So the very current data. So you look at the high volume of traffic, above high averages for accident ratios and that, very congested. We're talking about only 200 feet from the East Common to their point of ingress or egress. So can probably fit maybe 20 cars in that area and then we're going to get very congested. If you're in that area, the traffic already backs up to the fire station, which concerns me of if they have a medical emergency, how are they going to respond, get through the traffic? So I'm very concerned about that area. When you look at the speeds of traffic, I know that's my issue I have to deal with, but you know, the average speed is 37 miles an hour coming down High Street with 85 percentile going 42 miles an hour and a high speed of 62 miles an hour. So you couple all of that with the accident ratio with the congested area already, with the volume of traffic, the volume of speeds, just gives me, gives me really concerns about that point of ingress and egress. I wish there was an alternative. I know that deer run doesn't want the traffic, you know, filtering out through them. I know it's probably not safe going through the parking lot of the church, church with joyful noise. Um, so, but I, I was very pleased that they are willing to work with the town. They're willing to look at additional traffic patents that we can do. They're willing to pay for the analysis, pay for the study. And this is something that we have been looking at through complete streets over the last couple of years. Superintendent Wiles and the Town Administrator and I have had numerous conversations. I know there's been some discussions of put, of putting a turnaround there or a rotary there. And I'm, I'm not a fan, but I think it's proven out that it's been successful in Beverly or a couple of other areas. I'm not just, not sure how that would look in downtown Topsfield and stuff and how would that all would work. But I think that it needs some more work. I think we need to do some more analysis, but I'm pretty, I'm, right now, today, I'm very concerned about the volume and that, how it all is going to intersect with South Common, High Street, East Common and Main Street.
Okay.
And Chief, can I ask, you're concerned with the way it is now or you're concerned that it'll get worse?
I'm concerned with how it is now, but I really think it's going to get worse when you're going to add, would say, I think they minimize and diminish the volume. I'm talking about 44 plus or minus units. How many cars are going to be utilizing that roadway or ingress or egress per day or per week? But again, it's just a concern of mine that I, I feel obligated to share my concerns with all of you so we can all make a, do a due diligence, make an educated decision whether this is good or not.
And can I ask, that 89,000 number, that was per month, per week, per?
Uh, that, that turned out to be a 10-day period of time from 5:21 to 5:31, leading up to the Memorial Day weekend.
Okay, thanks.
And that's, that was posted at 96 Main Street. Uh, so we had 41,463 cars coming into town and 47,427 going out of town.
Okay. So if I'm to understand then that they're basically volun, you know, volunteering to do this new audit or in-depth audit, is it different than whatever they referenced in the past?
I think they want to take a look at the, you know, what we have discussed with the Town Administrator and the Superintendent, how can we generally make that intersection safer as it is today? And I think that we should take advantage of them if they're willing to pay for another traffic study, analysis, a engineering plan that we can bring back to the select board that could actually make the whole intersection with or without this development safer. So I think we should really move forward with that, but that is, the Town Administrator is in your decision, sir.
I mean, I, I honestly can't see any reason why we wouldn't, you know, take advantage of somebody saying, well, let's see what we can come up with. I mean, it's no obligation to do anything that they come up with. And I know that, and I know that Kevin can attest that the word rotary is a very, very suspect word in these parts, even though there are a lot of people who would probably tell you that that is truly the answer here. I would be thoroughly curious to see what other answers there may be. So i- is there anyone who has any concerns about them moving forward with this?
Well, I, I, I agree. I think we ought to move forward with it and I think we ought to take advantage of anybody that wants to pay for an additional traffic study because to support your data, Chief. I, most of you probably already know this, but some years ago, there were two studies done about that intersection. One was a rotary and one was a stoplight. And both of those issues were shot down and never went forward.
Shot down by whom, Boyd?
I don't know whether it was the Board of Selectmen. I don't think it ever became a town meeting issue. So I think it might've been a Board of Selectmen and, and the safety team that existed at that time. There was concern about the traffic light would slow the traffic down and make the congestion even worse trying to get through a traffic light at that corner. I think there was talk about the fact that the rotary would be very unsightly in that location and it would, it would detract from the piece of property in front of the library and detract from the piece of property in front of Town Hall. So they were, they were pretty much categorically denied possibility. I, I believe that that may have all, back up just a little bit. It's always been my opinion that the traffic through that intersection has gotten worse since the shoe has been developed into a monumental industrial complex. And I think that that's, that's an awful lot of that traffic in and out of Beverly is causing that kind of an issue probably. Where it goes from here, I don't know. I, I, I'd just like to add a comment that we talked about at the last meeting of the Emerson Homes, which was, I believe, two or three weeks ago, maybe. I made a statement at that meeting about the fact that I live in a subdivision in town that's got twice the number of residential, residential units that that one has. And granted Ipswich Road doesn't have the kind of traffic that, that 97 does, but I can tell you it is almost never have I seen two cars at a time trying to get on Ipswich Road from Great Hill Drive. Uh, so the amount of traffic that we're going to see coming out of that development, in my opinion, is going to be really minimal, but they still have to interface with all the traffic on High Street.
Um, if I could add just a couple of things, I agree with Boyd that it's probably not going to be high traffic coming out of there, but it only takes one car to try to pull out and nosed out into the, you know, traffic heading eastward on 97 going to Beverly that is not expecting a car to be nosing through the other lane and then everybody jams on their brakes. So it doesn't have to be high traffic, it's just disruptive to the current flow. I would just caution us maybe to want to work in concert with the ZBA process. The very, uh, the first public hearing for the 40B is on the 25th of October. So they will be reviewing all the traffic information and there may be additional questions that they have or peer review studies, or I don't know what they're going to be asking Caleb for. Not that they would turn down the free money to look at the intersection, but they may have some additional concerns. So I would think we just want to work, work in concert with this ZBA process so that we're not talking to Caleb about one thing concerning traffic and they're asking them a series of other questions and we're heading down two different paths.
Chief, I can't think of any lights in Topsfield. We don't have any lights that flash yellow on one side and red on the other, do we?
No, there's no intersections that have any lights in the town of Topsfield, other than state approved ones on Route 1.
On Route 1, yeah.
And I, I would just say too, it, it, personal preference, I know the traffic probably warrants a traffic light and that's by state Mass DOT standards, but I don't think that is necessarily the right solution for, say, Topsfield. I mean, we'll work through the process, we'll have to see, you know, take step by step, but you know, I think that would be a significant change. I think the most important thing though, as we go through this process and, you know, in this case, it is a safety audit, is to look at the safety components first and foremost, and then we can sort of walk through from there what we need to do. And I think that advice to your, to your point, I think it's a good point. We certainly need to work with the, the ZBA. My gut tells me that if we move forward with this, they will share, Dave and Caleb, that they've talked to the town, they have general support to perform this and that they'll take the next steps in performing that road safety audit so that it's sort of a box for them to check in a sense. One, they don't necessarily have to do, at least at this point in time, but one that they're, at this point in time voluntarily saying will take the, the reins of and will take, will take care of it. So it's, and it's the first step in many steps needed to address any type of changes to that intersection.
Right. I just, we're going to be looking at the same things. The select board is going to be looking at the same things as ZBA is. So we just want to work together.
Yeah, I am, you know, eager to read what, whatever ideas come up. I loathe that intersection with every fiber of my being and would, I just avoid, turning left there is just an impossibility. It doesn't matter from which side, just don't even bother turning left, just go through and do a U-turn somewhere. So I am very eager to see what ideas that anyone might have that can fix that.
Can I ask a couple of questions though? So this is just the safety audit? It does not come with the, and here's how you hear potential solutions?
It, it could potentially give a very high level idea of certain types of, like, this is the problem and this is certain treatments you could incorporate to address that, but it won't be a design exercise. What typically happens, for instance, if you get on the tip is Mass DOT will start working hand in glove with you, looking at design and what types of, what types of improvements we could consider. And it's a collaboration between the state and the local municipality around what types of treatments make sense. And so they'll have their warrants, which are really important because, you know, needs to be consistency and justification for any types of treatment, if any. And the start of that is to say, yeah, we have a problem, there's, there's safety issues here. And these are some high level, what we can talk about.
Cause I, I think, I think, I also think it needs to be done. I'm just trying to play out how this gets broadcast and communicated to, to the townspeople because if they're paying for the study and it comes back and says, oh, you can fix all of this by putting a light in. And then we think, well, a light's not really right for Topsfield. Caleb Group has, it would be perfectly acceptable for them to say, well, look, we, we, we paid for a solution to be developed, it's not us anymore, right? And I think this is also related to anybody who's listening has to understand Caleb Group would be on the hook for remediating any incremental issues with traffic. They're not the ones who are responsible for fixing the current situation. I think that will get lost in communication.
So Robby, as a point, just building on that, if Caleb were to fund this, would they give the town money so that the town worked with DOT? Or is Caleb working with DOT and sharing what they learned?
So the funding mechanism would be Caleb. How involved they are besides maybe listening to the conversation because it's helpful for them as they design their project? I couldn't say definitively, but I know that they, they, it will be an assessment performed on the town's behalf and the town's best interest. And that, that's, it'll look purely on the data, purely on the facts of what's being, what the current existing conditions are. And then any additional impacts for future projects that could have to the intersection. So, but it, it, as Chief said, there is an existing problem. And that's really what this will help us do is move forward. The data to then take that and say in an application for, to DOT on the tip saying, we've got real issues here and we need your help. It's a big ticket number and we need you to, to help support this and work with us on it, whether it's a Mass Works grant or a tip getting on the tip or whatever it might be. The data that comes out of this will verify what Chief Hubby, independently verify what Chief Hubby already knows and what we already know. Allow us to put, add to the application in the future.
I would think you'd want to look at it considering what Caleb is proposing because you wouldn't want to look at it and just say, well, here's our situation right now and what could solve it. And then say, okay, now 200, you know, feet down the road, we're having another entrance and egress that could potentially stop traffic or surprise people who are driving down. So we'd be looking at both, wouldn't we?
They, they probably can't say what the impact is going to be without setting a baseline though.
Which already is, is, again, as Chief said, is problematic, right? And so we've, we have a, I look out the select board room when I'm in that room in meetings or doing work outside my space and, you know, come rush hour, you know, the traffic's backed up for quite a ways. Sometimes it's white knuckle trying to get through that intersection, trying to coordinate who's going to go straight, who's going to the left, who's going right. It's a problem. And, and I think it's. Um, it's a problem and, and I think it is, I think trying to be proactive and at least understanding it to start with, what's the problem? And then taking the next step, what are potential solutions and then what fits right for Topsfield? And how do we go through the grant funds to, to make that happen? I think it's, it's, we're not jumping to the end and a conclusion of what's the right thing to do here. Um, more just kind of setting this, as I think, uh, Mr. McDonald just said, kind of setting the baseline of where we have and what future drop, the future project impacts would look like. Not a traffic study, but it's, it will be acknowledged, I think, in the safety report, you know, that there are, there is a project that will bring potentially more vehicles to the area.
Yeah. My, my only point is that I think adding the Caleb project doesn't just add volume. So it's not like we're going to have exactly the same situation we have now with another 44 cars. We're adding very different situations with cars jetting out and trying to cross and take a left from the Caleb entrance and exit. So it's a very different, um, addition than just 44 more cars to our current situation of cars backed up.
Yep. They'll look at the location of the proposed, um, entrance and exit. We'll factor that into the study.
I mean, I think if people don't like a rotary, if we come up with a cloverleaf solution with some overpasses uh, and ramp system, I think that that might be the answer that, you know, we're really looking for to maintain the quaintness of that.
They should hire Marshall's engineering firm to make that work.
Yeah, that's all right. We'll have to demolish a couple of buildings, including town hall. Once it's done, it'll, it'll look great.
Your, your idea is really going to look good, right?
Yeah. Once I propose my flyover cloverleaf plan, suddenly the lottery won't look so bad.
Your, your idea is crazy as mine. Let's put a sign out at 95 and says, no through traffic to Beverly.
Um, there are no more, uh, items on the agenda. I do have one note. Uh, I've been lax in giving, uh, folks, including myself, a deadline to turn in their written, uh, portion of, uh, the review of Kevin Hartunian. Uh, so our next work session where we would review all of that is that, uh, November 16th. So I would, uh, hope that we could get that into Deb's say, uh, you know, a week before, uh, November 16th, which would be November 9th. Uh, if you can have your filled out, uh, Kevin sheets to Deb by November 9th, then we can take it from there. Does that sound like an, uh, a doable deadline?
Yeah, I think so.
Yep. Um, Marshall, do you mind if I ask Kevin, was I remembering correctly? Did you say that the, the master plan committee was meeting on the 16th, the same time that we're meeting?
We are. So there's, there was, um, this, this Chair Hook would could probably confirm last night. It's always a challenge to get everybody a date that fits the calendars. And, um, the 16th worked for, for everyone in the room. Would you have the work session at 6:30? I'm sorry, at six o'clock. That meeting starts at, um, at six, I'm sorry. The work session is at six o'clock and the mass plan meeting starts at 6:30. So, um, if, if, if you're talking about me, I can just leave. Uh, um, and if, if, if there's more to the work session than that, um, we can maybe front load it. Um, or even address moving the meeting up maybe 30 minutes. Cause I know Mr.
Yeah, I was going to suggest, I know that, uh, clearly, uh, for at least one, uh, blue shirt wearing fellow, a five o'clock meeting is, uh, very difficult. But I don't know if we can have a one-off five o'clock meeting on that date. Uh, so we have plenty of time to do what we need to do and make, uh, the master plan meeting at 6:30. That would give us a full hour and a half, which would probably be more than we need.
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay.
Assuming I'm the blue wearing one.
Uh, I mean, technically I'm wearing blue, but I avoid, uh, speaking in the third person. So.
Yeah.
Um, and, uh, in talking about work sessions, not that I want to, uh, prod anyone. I believe someone else had something that they wanted to discuss regarding work sessions.
Well, I wanted to revisit what we talked about as a group at our last work session, which was at town hall. Uh, when we did Kevin's, Kevin's review and, and we had sort of a round table afterwards where we were talking about the benefits of in-person versus in a Zoom call. And I was, you know, making a modest case for why I thought that in-person for work sessions had value. Um, and I would suggest to you guys again, that I still think we are, we have better impact when we're discussing matters like intersections, if, if we could be face to face. Um, and I think that the dialogue is a little tighter and a little, I just think it's better in person. And I think at some point we should probably formalize whether we're going to do these things in person or on Zoom. It feels a little loosey and I know that's the rules right now. Uh, but I would, I would suggest that on work sessions, we make an effort to get together where we can, face to face, sorry.
So I know that in, uh, the conversation Cam and I had is every time we have this discussion, uh, the general sense is, hey, we all love to be in person. You know, Zoom has its benefits too. I'm open to either. And then that's it. We don't talk about it anymore. And the next time it comes up, we have that same conversation. So I think the concrete proposal that's in front of us, uh, and I won't ask people to, I mean, we're not going to vote on anything tonight, but, uh, as, as kind of a cue to, you know, getting back to that theoretical normal while also appreciating the value of the Zoom meeting. I think the proposal that I'd like people to consider is we will continue to do our formal meetings, our Monday meetings on Zoom for as long as practical, practicable. Um, but perhaps the, the, the compromise solution is we do those meetings on Zoom and we do our work sessions in person. Um, the, the, and I know it's been a discussion for the years that I've been on this board that, you know, there are times when our two different types of meetings don't really feel like two different types of meetings. It just feels like, well, one's a meeting where we vote on things and one's a meeting where we don't. Uh, this I think would with, and part of that discussion has been a goal that work sessions should get back to feeling a little more like what the original concept of a work session was, which may have been a single issue discussed. But I think at this point is more of a discussion based, working through things that we then set up for a vote at a regular meeting. Uh, and maybe if we formally made work sessions in person, that would help us get back to that idea.
Um, I don't have any problem for November and December. The only issue is when we start up the budget meetings, we meet every week.
Right.
Um, we may want to revisit those meetings because that's a lot.
Yeah. Yeah, it is. I agree with you.
And again, as we've always noted, we can change anything we want in any one of these meetings, as long as we do it with the appropriate amount of notice for, you know, the public meeting rules. So certainly we can decide to say, we're going to do these in person until budget season. And then we'll go back to deciding meeting by meeting or however we want to do it at that point.
I think it's also made, made easier, you know, if somebody can't make it. I know currently I feel terrible if I can't make it, but, uh, so as long as we recognize in-person meetings might make it, uh, more likely that someone cannot attend, which is totally fine. We've said that before.
Did we vote just on our schedule for location through the end of the year?
Uh, I don't, I'm not even sure that we, well, that would be a Deb question, I guess.
Cause I know we can only do it legally through the end of March. I can't remember whether we said we'll do it through the end of March or whether we said just through the end of the year and then let's reassess. So we'd only be changing November and December to be in person for the work sessions. And then we were going to reassess anyway. Um, based on what was happening with COVID, but Deb, can you remind us?
I, I have to, I honestly don't remember what the vote was exactly. I just remember, um, you guys did, you know, you have that option to change if you, if you wanted to, but I, I don't remember if you went through the end of the year or not. I, I think you did, but I, I'd have to look at the, the minute.
I feel like when you read the announcements of our upcoming meetings, there's always some sort of addendum that says, you know, location subject to change, or, you know, check schedule for location or something like that. But it's always kind of dangling out there, this option to switch between in-person and remote. Anyway, I, again, I don't, I don't want, I'm sorry.
Should we commit for November and December? Cause it's just one work session for each of those months and then.
I mean, I'm prepared to. I did say that I wasn't going to force people to make a decision, but if everyone's comfortable actually committing to being in person, then I am comfortable doing that myself.
Uh, I'm good with that, but I thought you said we don't vote in work sessions.
Well, I don't, I don't know that this is a formal, I don't think we need a motion and a vote for this.
Yeah. It's more of a, we're working, so we're agreeing to work in a different venue. That's it.
It just makes it easier for the calendar because you do have to a lot more time. I can't budget as tightly. You know, this one I, I have to jump on two minutes before.
That's true.
It's like, okay, I'm going to have to, my next meeting is going to have to be location close to town hall, et cetera. So it's easier. Like in my calendar.
That's true.
And Raphael needs to make sure his bike works. So he can bike into town halls.
I got it fixed last week at the local place.
All right. So, uh, the only person who has not spoken on this is Boyd, but, uh, are you all right with the person?
Yeah, I, I can go along with it.
All right. So I, I think then, uh, we, uh, have informally, formally decided to hold our November and December work sessions in person.
Is that in the select board meeting room or the meeting room we used to use for the work session?
I think we can stick with the select board meeting room. It's got the camera set up. It's got more space, which I still think is important uh, at some level. Plus we've barely used it. So, uh, you know, it'd be nice to get back in there, but.
I agree.
All right. Uh, does anyone have anything else? Yes, Mr. McDonald.
Two other things to follow up on. There was an email about a hunting request. I don't know if anybody has followed up with that.
I think chief did, didn't he?
So there was one, a while ago, but then there was one last week as well. Uh, the, Mr. It is the same person. They were looking evidently, they need the select board's permission to hunt on town land, if I remember it correctly. Um, with a bow and arrow. So I don't know if anything, anybody's followed up and at least said, hey, we've gotten this, we'll consider it. Or I just don't know what happened with it.
I have not followed up. Kevin, were you copied on that email? If not, I will forward it to you. I will, you know what? I'll forward it to Kevin and chief regardless.
And then typically what we'll do is we've had these once in a while, Mr. McDonald. And what typically happens is we'll talk with them, let them know that they need to go through their plan with the chief of police, the chief police will, or, or is designated, we'll speak to them about, um, what they're looking to do and then make a recommendation if it meets the standards and, and master general law, and if it's recommended or not. And then typically if it meets the standards though, it's, it's something we, we would approve because the law allows it to take place unless there's some of, that said, I know one or two that have come up in the past. Um, we do make sure that there's notification to a butters, that there's, um, conversations with them to understand when they're doing it, how they're doing it. Just so there's ample communication. So nobody is, uh, surprised to find someone, uh, in a location, uh, performing hunting on public property.
I think, I think it would be great if somebody can just get back to them with at least that process. Cause if it's a six month process, they'll miss the hunting season anyways, but at least they'll be prepared for next year. If it's a, you know, one week process. And then does a formal request come to the select board from the requister or from the chief?
I think in my experience, limited those though, it maybe it came from the requesting and then we would get advice, uh, from the chief.
And they'll come to a regular meeting and, and sort of go through their plan, um, of what they're looking to do. It'll be a chance to ask, ask questions. What I, my recollection is typically there's, there's sort of specific action items that are, are asked of the applicant. And the applicant has to go back, perform those, whether it's notifications or more clarity on what they're going to be doing, when they're going to be doing it. And then they'll come back with a full sort of, um, list of what the expectations of what they'll be doing will look like.
Okay.
Um, just a, a, along the, the discussion of communication, kind of the Marshall's point about how we didn't make a decision on the, the meetings, we kind of discuss it and then just let it sit. I remember before we were talking about a process whereby people who emailed us would be responded to right away, saying that we got your email and so-and-so was handling it and, and letting them know that we received it. I don't reply to the emails because it goes to six of us. And instead of having six responses, I thought it was being funneled Kevin through your office and Debbie to give that initial response. Um, I don't know if that's still the process, but I think it'd be helpful if then we got notified that they have been and maybe a CC to us when the response goes back to the person. So we know there has been a response to the email.
Sure. I, I, I absolutely will. We pride ourselves with communication and quick responses. Um, and so we'll make all efforts to do that. Um.
I know it's been crazy there with Donna out and Debbie is up to her ears. Um, but just so, you know, we get back.
I'd be happy to respond. Get, I didn't get the email though, so.
Well, I was going to say it, it's, it's a little incumbent upon us because now looking at this one, it didn't, it came to each of us individually. They did not include the selectmen at Topsfield email address, which is what Kevin and Deb get. Uh, so I will take responsibility for this because I typically try to look at the recipients to see, uh, you know, if that selectman email is included and if it's not, then Kevin and Deb would have no idea we ever got this email.
Right.
As they, they don't. So I will do, uh, cause I have responded to a number of those when that isn't included on there and then I include that one on there. So yes, it's, uh, Kevin and I will work more on this to, to, to get better.
And then the, the last thing, uh, thank you, everybody. You got back to me about the select board listening sessions. Um, and again, we're only doing it for the next four months and then we'll, it's about how far out I can think. Um, and so we've got the venue at the library, October 22nd, November 19th, December 17th and January 21st, which happens to be Aiden's birthday, uh, from 10 to 11:30. And I had to pick, I couldn't put everybody who was available in every session. Uh, so the winners are me and Lynn on the 22nd. Marshall and Cam on November 19th. Me and Boyd on December 17th. And then Marshall and Boyd on January 21st. So I'm sorry, Cam and Lynn, you're only one.
What time was that?
10 AM to 11:30 AM.
And that was on the 22nd, you said of October?
October 22nd, yes. And if I screwed any of those dates up and put you down as available when you said you weren't, let, let me know.
I'm good.
Okay. Um.
And then the other bit that you all have told me, so as a reminder, bring a laptop because there's a good possibility that absolutely nobody comes. Or a book, if you can get one, since it's in the library, probably wouldn't be a problem.
Marshall, we're going to like pitch pennies against the wall or something.
Well, I think we're going to be fine. We're going to promote the living hell out of it to make sure.
Which was, which was my next question. So how do we promote the living hell out of this?
Well, I, I know that, uh, Kevin and Stephanie will work it into their, uh, rotation of town. Um, uh, communication, the communication plan that, uh, is going terrifically, by the way. So we'll make sure that you guys have, uh, those dates so we can put those in there. Um, and then typically what I have done with those items that I feel need that extra little push of promotion is I share the official from the, on Facebook. Anyway, I share the official post that Stephanie does to the residence page in an effort to both get it out there more and to try to show people that there is a official town of Topsfield, uh, place for this stuff. And, and maybe they learn to go back to that. So, uh, I think that at least at the outset is a good way to go.
Okay. And so I'm thinking of the one in 10 days, will we, we'll have something from Stephanie that we can do that with?
Uh, I'm looking at Kevin, but I'm sure he can get that onto the.
If you see the, the schedule that was, that was confirmed and Stephanie or send it to me and I'll send it to Stephanie.
Yeah.
May make sure you see Debbie. Um, we'll make sure that we put together a promotional piece that we could push out. Um, just be warned, your photo might be on it.
Yeah. And, and by the way, with that one, I'm sure Stephanie would, would obviously do this, uh, highlight that it's the first of,
Right.
This is going to become a regular thing.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, also just for those people who used to like going before, um, I don't know if we want to, you know, give a shout out to saying, I don't know if we want to, you know, give a shout out to saying the listening sessions are continuing. I mean, Dick did them for years. So we're restarting the listening session.
I think that's a great idea, Lynn. I think it's a great idea.
Okay.
Will there be food? I'm just curious. Would be anything?
Marshall, are you going to bring any baked goods or perhaps something?
I mean, uh, we, we, we have friends in two lovely baked areas here in town between the Bake Shop and others.
Perhaps it could be sponsored by the Bake Shop.
I, I believe it's in the library, no food or drink, right?
That's not, that's not true. I've been to events in that little community. There have been plenty of food, including the retirement party for the old library director. So if the library director can have food.
Well, she's like, what are you going to do? Fire me?
Well, no, the, the she who was retiring, you know.
So we're going to hold these meetings in the community room at the front.
I think that's, that's the space you got, right?
Whichever one David Tremblay told me, he said, there's also a Topsfield room if there's somebody who's already booked. But I think we get first preference and they were all open for that community.
That room right as you walk in and it's right to the right.
Yeah.
Okay.
And just one other thought, too. We can put it in the announcements at the select board meetings. So when we read and they get recorded, let them know about the listening session for our massive audience.
All right, very good.
Mr. Chair, if I could just make one comment very quickly before we wrap.
No.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Um, so we have two things that we were very proud of. I know the select board is very proud of the work you've done on this and the team is very, very happy about. Last week, the RFP for the Old Highway Garage went out on the street. And then yesterday, last night, we had our master plan kickoff meeting. Both went very well smoothly and we're looking forward to continuing the conversations on both fronts. And then lastly, that was one, two. And we'll talk about this on Monday, but just want to say a big thank you to our public safety team, our inspectional services teams for the work that they performed over the past 11, well, now 12 days, 13 days, with regards to the Topsfield Fair. You know, the success of it doesn't happen by accident. It's 365 days of, of work and it's, it's incredible to watch from my viewing point, what goes into it and the things behind the scenes that make it all come together. It's much appreciated and just a big thank you. And this might be a little premature because I know we're going to talk about it Monday, but I, I want to acknowledge that as well before we wrap. So thank you.
Awesome.
All right. With that, is there a final motion? Well, really, our first and last motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. Any discussion here? None. Mr. McDonald.
Hi.
Mr. Brown. I'm sorry. Did you want me to give, leave a little more space for discussion there? No? Okay. Mr. Brown.
Hi.
Mr. Jackson.
Hi.
Ms. Bermudez.
Hi.
And Mr. Hookus and I, we are adjourned.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, folks.
So long.